Evening, I am going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order.
Move the minutes of special counsel February 23.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move counsel and committee February 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be adopted, regular land use February 23.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be received, finance committee February 23.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations to be adopted.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to be adopted for public hearings February 23.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Delegations, first delegation, first public hearing, Madam Clerk.
First application is zoning amendment bylaw 18417. The civic addresses are 6378 138th Street, 13812, 13856, 13890 and 06, and 139, 28, 64th Avenue. The applicant is 01212 VC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to multiple residential 30 and single-family residential 12 in order to allow the development of 200 townhouses and three single-family lots. In addition, there is a development variance permit being sought to reduce the setbacks and allow an unenclosed tandem parking space for each tandem parking unit.
Thank you. We have one letter of correspondence received. Have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw? Is there anyone wishing to speak to this first bylaw? Deb, go ahead.
Good evening. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, care of 7680 143th Street here in Surrey. Question with regards to the tree issue. In the form made out by the arborist, under the deciduous trees, there is a section that indicates that trees are listed as city boulevard trees. And then there's a listing of what they are, and I'm wondering what that is about.
Could I get some clarification from Planner?
Madam Mayor, I think those are the trees that is within the street right of way, and they are counted, and there are 19 of them.
It's within the street right of way?
Right, but they will be dedicated as part of the road.
So, norobay, so I'll answer your question, Deb?
Well, I think so, so I guess one of the next question is, when the road's built, will they be taken out? My assumption is yes.
In some cases, it would be, but in considering the removal of the trees, engineering will be looking at other means, any means to try to save them, but in terms of what is in the chart that is proposed to be removed.
Okay, and the final question is, it says that six of protected trees were going to be removed off-site. And I was not able to determine from the pages on the computer where they might be.
Madam Mayor, some of the numbers there are not exact because some of the detailed site information is not available. It's shown there as a general idea as to how many trees will be removed or how many will be preserved. But in terms of the actual number, it will only come when we actually do the detailed site planning.
So, when it identifies removed off-site, does that mean off the applicant's property?
Yes, in some cases, when it involves the other property owner, then we'll have to get the agreement of the adjacent property owner in order for them to be removed.
So, some of the adjacent property owners' trees could be in jeopardy, and there would be some discussion with
Right, and we would not
The adjacent property, but there'll be protection measures implemented?
Right, or they will not be removed if the adjacent owner is not in agreement with
If he's not in agreement, or she is not in agreement, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification, I appreciate it. Once again, simply to indicate, 112 trees were identified as being, those of protected size, 79 of them will be destroyed, so that we'll have 33 left over with 18 deciduous and 33 conifer at this particular point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number one? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18418. The civic address is 14064 60th Avenue. The applicant is Hardip Samra. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one acre residential to single-family residential 10 and single-family residential 12 in order to allow subdivision into seven single-family lots and one remainder portion for future development with the adjacent property.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw, and I have no written correspondence relative to the bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak, Deb?
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, care of 7680 143th Street. The tree report indicates that three deciduous and 19 trees were identified as protected size, and all of those, 22 in total, are designated to be removed. However, reading further in the report, it indicates that staff have identified four trees, two Douglas fir and two red cedar, along 60th, and they will be working along with the client and engineering, et cetera, in order to see that these might be saved. So, I'd like to, I just made a notice to notice staff vigilance, appreciate that they're doing that. Hope they can save those four trees.
Yes, so do I. Thank you for your comments. It's always tough when there are small lots. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Second bylaw. First call, second call.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Teresa Rawl, authorized agent with H.I. Engineering, representing the owner applicant. As you're aware, our proposal includes seven lots, one R.F. 10 lot and six R.F. 12 lots in the South Newton NCP. We've been involved in a number of applications in the area and are familiar with development in South Newton. We've been working with the city staff on this application to address the requirements for lot layout, lot consolidation, and the cost sharing requirements for 141 Street. We believe our proposal and future concepts of lot consolidation and cost sharing in the immediate area have met the request of the city staff and have provided a solution for all the parties involved. We also continue to address the trees. We're continuing to work with the staff on the preservation of the trees through our detailed engineering design. Overall, we feel our proposal will provide a positive contribution to the neighborhood, and thank you for your time, and if you have questions, we can address them.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number two? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, please, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18415. The address is 573 276th Street. The applicant is Willington Charitable Holdings Society. The applicant is seeking to enter into an amending heritage revitalization agreement to allow for exterior and interior renovations in order to preserve the original features of the heritage cool.
Thank you. I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. We have one letter concerning roof access requirements. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number three? First call, second call, third and final call. Bylaw number four, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18416. The civic address is 1601 78th Avenue. The applicant is B.A.N. Holdings Limited. The applicant is seeking to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement amendment to permit the addition of a playground and removal of parking stalls to accomplish the proposed childcare center at the Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Thank you. I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. I have two letters of concern regarding parking and noise. Anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Bowman, I represent White Rock Chapel Inc., we're the business that runs the chapel. I just wanted to clarify that the removal of the parking stalls for the childcare center will limit the amount of activity that actually happens at the chapel. We will move our business away from renting out for weddings and funerals and public events, and we'll focusing, we'll be focusing on the chapel's use as a childcare center, and our focus will be on kids. I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Thank you for that clarification. First, anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Alexander, I live at 160558 Avenue, which is middle of the cul-de-sac, immediately east of the property. And my concern is in regards to parking. Currently, we have a chapel which, according to their own website, has a pew seating of 115 people, and we've got a total parking area on the chapel grounds of 13 parking stalls. The overflow seems to find itself on my cul-de-sac, so it makes it very difficult getting in and out of one's own driveways at times. Now, with the halving, or taking it down from 13 to about six parking stalls, I find the whole situation untenable. There is woefully inadequate parking as it exists already, and I know we only have, I just heard the last speaker, Mr. Bowman, state that, yes, we will be focusing our attention away from chapel activities, but that would remain to be seen. Unless proof of this can actually be submitted, I'm sorry, but I would adamantly object to parking being changed to accommodate this daycare facility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw number four? Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I'd be
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, you've already spoken.
Oh, I've already spoken, okay.
Yes, my apologies. Yes. Unless somebody else wants to speak for you? Okay.
Hi there, my name is Jennifer Ratcliffe, I am the proposed owner of the childcare facility. I just wanted to clarify that the hours of the daycare will be from approximately 7:30 to 5:30. Obviously, the children will be dropped off at that time, and that will be where the predominant amount of people will be showing up. They will not be staying there for a long period of time, and I don't anticipate them parking in faraway locations to bring their children to the facility, as it would not be safe for them to commute along the road there. I don't oversee the parking to be a problem. The Fraser Health has told me that there are, or there would be enough parking stalls to facilitate myself and the person who would be working with me in the childcare facility. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Hayne?
If I could ask the delegation to please come up, we actually have a question for you, please? Thank you. Counselor Hayne?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So, this is going to be a change in use of the venue, and there will not be worshiping at the facility once daycare is up and running anymore?
No, there won't. Now, I fully understand that parking is an issue with this facility. There's actual capacity in the building of 250 people. There's a capacity of 148 people on the main floor, the top floor, and 99 on the bottom floor. My vision for the building is to move completely away from activities such as weddings and funerals and church services, and focus primarily on the running of the daycare. You know, we fully understand that our neighbors in the cul-de-sac do have an issue with parking. All of the, you know, we make it very clear to anybody coming down to the chapel that if there is not enough parking in our parking lot, that they are to use the city of Surrey parking along 8th Avenue, along Semi-Amy First Nations. We also have an agreement with the Semi-Amy First Nations ban that we can use overflow parking at their parking lot on 8th Avenue, or Marine Drive on the White Rock side. But we will be moving away from any major events at the chapel. Now, if we were to not be able to put the childcare facility at the chapel, then we would have to move our business plan to renting the building out to weddings, funerals, public activities, and each one of those events will be, will require much more than the 13 parking stalls already at the chapel. So, we feel that it's actually, there'll be less impact on the community with the childcare facility because we limit the number of, number and types of events that we can have at the facility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Villanueva?
I just want to clarify that this is going to be a licensed childcare facility? Is that correct?
Yes, it will be a licensed childcare facility. The person who I'm currently speaking with at Fraser Health is Susan Christie, and she is fully aware of all the different steps that I've had to take to get to this point. It should be licensed for approximately 16 children maximum, and she has also outlined that the current, if the change was to go ahead with the parking stalls, with the amount of parking that would be still needed for the people working there, there would still be adequate parking for drop-off and pickup within the parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Thank you. Next bylaw, number five, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw number 18419 and zoning amendment bylaw 18420. The civic addresses are 2552 and 2580 164th Street. The applicants are 0771355 VC Limited and 0782717 VC Limited. The applicants are seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to comprehensive development, single-family residential 10, single-family residential 12, and single-family residential in order to create 33 single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the setbacks and vary parking requirements for RF-zoned lots and increase the minimum side yard on a flanking street and allow driveway access from the front yard for Lot 33.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have four speaker, four persons signed up in favor of this bylaw, not wishing to speak, and I have two signed up wishing to, against wishing to speak, and seven signed up in favor, also wishing to speak. So, I will start with Barb Newfeld.
Hi, Barb Newfeld, I live in Morgan Heights, which is directly across from the proposed development. And our main concern of the neighbors along Morgan Heights on the east, on the west side, is the concentration, the density of the population that's proposed for that development. And we just want to prevent the parking problems and the traffic problems that have happened in Clayton Heights. We're not used to the RF9 or now RF10 lots. Those are nine meters wide, though, even though they're RF10, I understand. And we feel that that does not mirror our neighborhood. The lots in our neighborhood are four to six thousand square feet, and they're RF12. And we don't have suites in every house like is proposed for the new development, the RF10s and the RF12s in new development. And we feel that that creates a situation that basically doubles the population of the neighborhood. And when traffic studies are done based on single-family houses, it comes up with half of the number of population, half of the number of cars that it should. In East Clayton, it even tripled because of the coach houses, the population, the way it was developed. So, we just want to avoid that in South Surrey as much as possible. And we are having to now deal with backing out of our 14 lots onto a very busy street already, 164th, and into lanes coming out of that development. 164th will eventually drain all of the traffic south of us from Walmart and Costco directly down 164th as it joins that neighborhood, and Superstore as well. And so, it's going to be extremely busy. It's already very difficult to back out of our parking lots, out of our driveways. And I think every neighbor here can attest to being run, honked at, you know, run down, roared around. It creates road rage already, and I think if further, if this further lane, which is just south of 26th, I'm at 2577, there's a lane coming out of the neighborhood that drains two-thirds of the lots. It's projected to drain two-thirds of the lots from that development onto 164th. We would suggest that the lane go easterly to 164A, which is to, is to be developed. That's, that's a done deal. And so, the traffic would more quietly enter 25th Avenue to the south and 26th Avenue to the north, and then disperse east in an east-west pattern. There is probably going to be an additional lane just north of 25th Avenue, it looks like, so that will drain onto 164. And it goes east and west all the way to 168th as well. But, but the thing is, is that we have a special situation because we have driveways along that access there to 164th. And that's not the case on 25th or 26th Avenues. On 26th Avenue, there are circular driveways on acre, four acre lots, where the population there, the four families, can turn their cars around, come out forward. They don't have a lane of parked cars in front of their homes. There's no parking on their side. And they don't have to worry about backing over, we're going to have two bike lanes on 164th as well, and we have sidewalk for pedestrians, and then we've got two rows of parked cars. So, it's very difficult to see backwards safely onto that road. And then we talked to traffic about, the traffic engineering department, about trying to calm the traffic that's already a problem, and they basically said that there's no way of calming it. Janelle covered, you know, circles, traffic circles that might be put at 26th and 164th to slow the traffic, to give us a minute to back out of our driveways. And she said that they didn't want to slow traffic there with a circle because of emergency vehicles. And so, I'm requesting that, I guess, number one, that all of the homes that are not CD be changed to RF12 lots, and that would lessen the total population coming out of that area. I think each home has to be looked at as a vertical duplex with two families living in each single-family home, with the, you know, twice as many cars, twice as many people. So, I think if we honestly look at the population, I think to mirror our side of the road, it should all be not less than RF12. There's a development going in right now, just on the other side of those four acres to the north, that is RF12, all, you know, four to six thousand square feet lots, and with cul-de-sacs like our development. So, we think that that's what should have gone in here as a buffer between all of the townhomes and apartments that are going in along 24th Avenue, which will also drain south onto 164th. So, I'm requesting that, but at the very least, please, two more stop signs, so that that's a four-way stop, just to give us a second to back out of our driveways and get onto 164th. And I think all of my neighbors would agree to that. The petitions that we signed, there's two petitions that have gone around the neighborhood that were unanimously signed, did not have that lane accessing 164th. This version, we just saw when you guys sent out the letter about the public hearing, we weren't included in any of the meetings, January, February, and March. The residents along 164th weren't notified about them. And the first we knew about this was last week, that it had been changed to access So, we would just like some way of ameliorating the impact onto 164th. Okay. So, I think my neighbors, if anyone else can speak, will tell you about the traffic, and probably reconfirm that we do need at least two more stop signs, because the emergency vehicles would go through those anyway, so it wouldn't slow traffic.
Let me just clarify a couple of things
Sure.
From your comments. Are there any coach houses, Mr. Planner, allowed in these zones? I didn't think we had coach houses any longer.
Madam Mayor, no, there's no coach houses.
And the properties fronting 164, they're not having sort of the reciprocal driveways that are across the street on 164? They're only
They're accessed in a lane.
The lane in order not, okay. Are they all RF12s or are they RF10s? It looks like to me like they're
The lots fronting onto 164 are RF12s.
They are already RF12s?
Right.
Yes, okay. Just so, with no driveways?
No, it's really the lane areas accessing 164th that are going to be the biggest issue, backing out from our side.
So, you would prefer that they all have driveways onto 164 or?
No, our two petitions that were signed by all of the neighbors on 164th had the lanes going into where Lot 11 is, if you can see Lot 11.
Oh, I see, you want the lane going to the easterly direction.
Going in the opposite direction. Right, and then draining north and south on 164A.
Okay, thank you.
Also, east, you know, on 25A, also down the other lane, further north of that there in between the CD units and the RF9s or 10s. And then also, there's another lane down here, just north of 25th Avenue, where traffic can drain east and west, and also 25th Avenue. So, there's a lot of ways that traffic can leave that neighborhood without taking two-thirds of those lots and people and cars and draining them all out on the one lane that goes into our driveways, you know, close to the intersection there.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, I have Dave Moffett.
Madam Mayor, it's been some time since I've had the opportunity to speak with your council, and the first time with you as mayor. I was part of the CAC 5A group that worked on these areas. And, you know, to my dismay, I find that they are quite troublesome to those folks that have to live around them. So, the only reason, Madam Mayor, that I'm here is to express the concerns of Country Woods residents. And that concern is that the South Surrey area seems to have a development target. Now, first of all, 5A was taken out of, out of NCP 5 and made its own little group in order to develop the area. And, you know, our concern is that all of the real estate that is devoted to half acre to one acre to more properties are targets for development. And I see just recently that the, that the council has determined a different classification for Country Woods area, for the area of 5. So, I'm having a little trouble trying to understand what is going on. And in the last meeting when I appeared before council with Diane Watts in your chair, we spoke about us, that is, those people that, that have properties that are one acre that are one acre and more, have to have some kind of refuge in council. There has to be someone that will look after the reasons why we moved to Surrey in the first place. The nice thing about it, uh, we have a neighbor and our friend, David Woods, on your council. And he and I have shared many moments of the same kinds of concerns and desires for South Surrey. Having said all that, Madam Chairman, I feel that, uh, the CAC for 5A has, has let us down. That, uh, I worked very hard with respect to that group and representatives from, from the, uh, the management teams from council to ensure that those folks that are facing that development with the acre properties would not have high, high-density development to look at and their traffic. So I bring that to your attention, not because I am closely, um, related to the area, but knowing that, uh, we're just a step away. I guess I can say I've been to sleep for a couple of years, but my concern is, is now growing very strong that we're not that far away. Madam Mayor, we, we, we're responsible individuals. Most of us are ex-business people. We moved to Surrey for a reason, and we cherish that reason. And we need to look to you and your council to be able to look out for our interests. You know, we're citizens, we're taxpayers, and we bank on you to do that. Those are my comments, and coming after me will be people that have much more details with respect to, to what's going on with respect to this particular development program. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moffett, and, uh, many of us share those same sentiments regarding making sure there are opportunities to protect those larger properties in Surrey. And we have done so as recently as a couple of meetings ago with, uh, Councilor Hane, bringing that to our attention as well. I now have a Sandra, I think it's Houghton.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. My name is Sandra Houghton. I reside at 16533, 26th Avenue in Surrey. It is my understanding that the city of Surrey expects developers to complement and enhance existing neighborhoods when they purchase land for new development. To have this expectation recognized and achieved, it took our neighbors over 18 months of negotiating involving hundreds of unpaid hours with Raycon, one of the several developers on 26th Avenue. Eventually, with the assistance of the city planning and development and engineering departments, both sides compromised on a solution. Raycon agreed to build single-family homes on their south-side properties facing 26th Avenue with width ranging between 31 and 36 meters. This decision created a satisfactory complement to our one-acre properties on the north side. We want this to become the standard for all homes built on the south side of 26th Avenue between 164th and 168th Streets. Specifically, in respect of the estate homes already established on our street, all new residents would be, residences would be single-family homes on properties with a minimum width of 31 meters. This standard supports the city of Surrey's requirement that developers must respect and complement existing neighborhoods. Recent communication, however, initiated by two unrelated developers on our street indicate that neither one is yet considering smooth transitions to be a priority or even a concern in their current plans. Will we, as a neighborhood association, have to endure extensive negotiations with each developer independently to have our goal of transitional zoning respected? As explained, an acceptable standard of lot size for single-family homes has been established for our street with Raycon. I am asking the city to support our purpose to maintain this standard and integrity of our neighborhood by approving this transitional zoning option and requiring it to be adhered to by all developers on 26th Avenue. I would also like to make a comment regarding the multi-use pathway. Raycon has agreed, agreed not to have driveways exit across the multi-use pathway onto 26th Avenue. Their homes will be provided with back lane access and detached garages. I'm hoping this will be considered by all developers for the purpose of maximizing the safety of the pathway, as it will become a very popular walking venue when it is completed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Eva Zhang?
Sir, I will be the interpreter.
I'm sorry, sir?
Uh, I'm, will be the translator. Eva cannot speak English.
Translator?
Yeah.
Thank you.
晚上好，市长和委员会
And good evening, Mayor and Council. So I live in at 164，64，26th Avenue, across from the lot 33 and part of lot 31. And I have been looking at the plan for this development since 2013. I had letters from the city of Surrey. I also look at the NCP that says the 26th Avenue can have houses on the half-acre lots across from me, not just small lots. I like the plan that was agreed by the planning department in February. There are one-half houses planned across from my house. They look like they will be high-quality. The lots across from me and my neighbors are not one-half acre, but are almost as large as mine. And will look very good with a green buffer and wide sidewalk for people to walk on. Personally, I don't like the road, uh, to 26th Avenue, but I understand there need to be one. Uh, but I want no more roads or lane near my house anymore. And, uh, please approve this plan. So my street, which I love, because my large lot and the trees stay quiet. And thank you for the，还有没完是吧？
啊，okay，嗯，就这样吧
Thank you for the planner for working with my neighbors and hearing all the concerns about our street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nathan Yang?
Yeah, it's, it's me. Okay, I'm Ava's neighbor. Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Nathan Yang. Uh, I'm speaking in support with these applications. Now, I own my home in Morgan Heights, just like about three minutes' walk from 26th Avenue. Now, I also have a one-acre lot at 164, 93, and 26th Avenue, where I'm building a 10,000-square-foot home for all my three young kids. When I purchased the property, it was understanding that large lots around the half-acre would be planned across from me. And that time I checked with the planning department, I was told the big lot will be planned and will match near another side, the north side of the 26th Avenue. I have been part of the process to review lot plan for this application since 2013. And I'm very happy with the final plan, which we saw today. And the planning department and the developer did a really good job with, with us when we negotiated and exchanged all our concerns. And across from me is a 31-meter lot, which is lot number 30 and part of number 31. That's a 31-meter wide lot with a beautiful home that will complement the other homes on the north side of 26th Avenue. And I really hope that other property developed on the Orchard Grove will be along this line. And thank you very much to the planning department and the developer for listening to all the needs and concern on my street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Yang. Uh, next up, I have Victoria Blinkhorn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. My name is Victoria Blinkhorn, and I live at 16505, 26th Avenue. I'm very happy to be speaking in support of this application tonight. My family and I have been Surrey residents for 25 years and have raised our family on our acreage home that we built 16 years ago on, uh, the north side of 26th in Area 5. That's actually my house, 16505. You can kind of see it kitty-corner to lot 30 there. So I look onto this property every day. Um, I would like to first make comments as a homeowner and taxpayer directly impacted by the development that will evolve as a result of this application and others on 26th Avenue downstream. During the public consultation process for the Orchard Grove NCP in 2010 and 2011, I attended information sessions and submitted commentary. My suggestions focused on two things, since I realized that higher-density development in 5A was more or less a fait accompli, which has been mentioned this evening. My two concerns during that period was, one, to establish lot sizes for new lands adjacent to one-acre properties at a firm minimum of half-acre, or two UPA in planning language, for the interface between Area 5 and 5A on 26th Avenue. The other thing that I was most concerned about was supporting a green transition landscape buffer on 26th from 164th all the way to 168th eastwards. Although neither of these details were incorporated, when the NCP was approved, I was nonetheless encouraged to see several pages devoted to the sensitive interface between the north and south sides of 26th Avenue to preserve the character of the area. As you are aware, Madam Mayor and Council, this application was referred back to staff before first and second reading on July 17th, 2014, to further explore with residents of 26th Avenue the issue of transitional density. At the time, you will recall that residents who were in opposition to the lots planned on 26th Avenue did not have major concerns about, uh, the RF12 and smaller lots that were built in the internal part of the development. Specifically, uh, regarding transitional density, Councilor Hane requested that staff and residents review the range of transitional density numbers, which although were very clear in the Grandview Heights Land Use Plan at two to four units per acre, they are less numerically defined in the Orchard Grove NCP. Mayor Hepner, then Councilor Hepner, um, supported this by recommend, recommending that the lots on the south side of 26th Avenue in Orchard Grove, which at this point in the application's evolution were 24 meters wide, be quote, "larger and closer to a mirror image to those on the north." In January 2015, the 26th Avenue Residents Group was invited back to the table by planning to further explore these various suggestions. The plan you have been asked to approve tonight is a result of collaboration between the applicant, senior planning department staff, and a group of engaged community members. The directions of council, and most particularly Mayor Hepner's suggestion for closer-to-mirror-image lots, were followed and essentially resolved. I would like to thank Mr. Nicholas Lyte for his patience, perseverance, time investment, and negotiation skills during the process that he spearheaded in late January. The resolution resulting in large lots with minimum 31-meter frontages on the south side of 26th in Orchard Grove to transition to one-acre properties on the north side of 26th in Area 5 would similarly not have been possible without the time and attention of planners Ms. Heather Kamitaka-Hera and Mr. Ron Hinchi, as well as input from Doug McLeod of Engineering. And last but not least, Roger Jawande of CityWest Engineering is thanked for the work that he did on this application, which was not without its complications and many moving parts. This application package you see tonight is the successful result of consensus through compromise and collaboration. Did the applicant compromise on what was originally planned to build on the interface as per the NCP? Yes. Did the residents of 26th Avenue compromise on what we wanted in terms of density on the south side of 26th as per the NCP? Yes. Rather than half-acre lots, two UPA with mirroring frontages that we wanted and which are within the NCP, the plan before you proposes interface lots which are approximately three units per acre. North side frontages of 155 feet, whoa, 100 meters, will be faced by those measuring 101 feet, 31 meters, and I think this is a great place to land and move forward from. The building scheme by Mike Tyne is stately and thorough, and although there is always a difference between rendering and reality, when the NCP implies and residents demand built form to complement or exceed the quality of homes on the north side of 26th, I believe that has been achieved to date. Both the green transition landscape buffer and multi-use pathway, or enhanced sidewalk, will be interrupted only by proposed 164A Street, which you can see up there, and no driveway or lane curb cuts. You can't please all the people all the time, and of course, there will be residents who are unhappy with certain aspects of this lot layout and some of the larger issues that higher-density development in general brings, such as traffic control and parking, which we've already heard this evening. I share these concerns. However, as Sir Michael Jaeger has famously expressed, "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometime, you just might find you get what you need." As directly affected homeowners within the immediate proximity of this application, I truly think this plan on the interface closes gaps on most needs. I would like to close with some horizon comments offered from a complimentary perspective. The process of shepherding this application through its initial phases to public hearing and hopefully third reading tonight engaged more people than I would have ever imagined in the wider Grandview community. Through the Grandview Heights Search of Associations Information Sharing website, we were able to inform members and the interested public about the process of and issues central to this application. This in turn enabled a dialogue that confirms that homeowners and taxpayers, at least where I live, want to have a say in the shape of their evolving neighborhood. I'm committed to supporting this application in its present form and again acknowledge planning management under the direction of Mr. Lamonteng for it, for initiating its reanimation in the discussion about the 26th Avenue interface. So the standards of density, quality-built form, and green space establishment are set by this application and can be, and which are in concert with the NCP that consequentially move eastward with its high watermarks. This is the first of many files that involve 26th Avenue, uh, the 26th Avenue interface, and I look forward to being at the table with planning as both a resident and a member of the GHSA and as a concerned citizen for applications to come. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Did you have any questions?
I see no. Next speaker on this application is Sybil Rol.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm requesting at your time permission to read a letter from Tracy Reddy, resident of 26th Avenue, who was part of the resident meeting group since January 2015. She is very invested in this application but is regretfully out of town. So do I have your permission to read her letter to you?
Certainly, go ahead.
Dear Mayor, Council, and other attendants, first, I would like to apologize that I am not here in person to discuss the very important topic of development in Grandview Heights and specifically along 26th Avenue. Unfortunately, I had a planned trip out of the country or else I would have attended. I have been a longtime resident of Surrey over 20 years, and in my business life with HSBC and as CEO of Coast Capital Savings, I have financed hundreds of millions of development in the lower mainland of Surrey. I really do believe that the future lives here in Surrey, and I want to make it very clear that I am not anti-development, nor are any of my co-residents along the street of 26th Avenue. However, I do believe in smart development, and I also believe the city has a responsibility to protect the community as well as ensure that the existing residents are not negatively impacted by the new developments. To do anything else would detract from the essential desirability of living in Surrey. We are pleased that after a significant amount of time, we have come up with an outcome that is satisfactory to the city, the residents of 26th Avenue, and Ricon, the developer. I am supportive of what is being put forward. However, I would like to make a few points. First, it is highly important for all of the residents down 26th Avenue that there is complete consistency moving forward with all new developments on 26th Avenue. This includes consistency in lot size, development quality, and green space buffering. This also includes tree retention. To do anything less would be detrimental to the longstanding residents and taxpayers of this area. A piecemeal approach to development on this street, or for that matter, anywhere in Grandview Heights, will detract from the neighborhood and discourage people from moving here. Yes, there is an NCP for Area 5A, but why can't the rollout of 26th Avenue be considered more holistically? A recent new development proposal on 26th Avenue submitted by Qualico while preliminary is now looking for four times 24-meter lots per 300-foot frontage adjacent to the development being discussed tonight, which after nearly two years of dialogue, has received agreement from the residents for a minimum of 31-meter lots on the Orchard Grove 26th Avenue frontage. Another development property before planning and in the early stages of community consultation is kitty-corner to our residents, and I see on the green application signs that the developer is proposing to put duplex lots across from us. A public information meeting held in January sent a very clear message to the applicant on this file, that duplexes are not in keeping with our neighborhood. These applications are not productive nor consistent with what even the mayor has said needs to be done on 26th, that housing to the south side must mirror and be consistent with the north side of the street. Secondly, when I moved into this area in 2007, we checked the zoning across from us as we were concerned that the green space would be developed. At that time, the zoning was for half-acre lots, which we were fine with. It was then disheartening and frustrating to find out that the zoning was changed to allow for duplex or higher-density housing. This is not right and is disingenuous to the longstanding residents who moved into this area on the basis that a plan was a plan, not that it could be changed opportunistically at the will of the developer. Finally, this has been an inordinately lengthy process for all involved. It has taken nearly two years to get to the agreement on the Ricon property because of the disputes in how the land would be developed. This is not productive for any of the stakeholders. It would seem to me that for all parties involved, there must be a better way to approach development in the Grandview Heights area, and particularly at this time on 26th Avenue. If a well-fought-through plan that had at its core the requirement of development to enhance the neighborhood, protect the existing residents, this could serve as a useful guide for developers as well as residents. The plan would set detailed standards which would have to be met, and change would only be allowed if it enhanced the area. Without such a detailed, firm plan, as we know, developers will always be inclined to go for the largest-density developments, which is not illogical from their perspective. However, it wastes the resources of the city and the time of the residents and the developers to continue in this piecemeal fashion where the residents feel unprotected and at the mercy of the process. Madam Mayor and Councilors, with the greatest of respect, please let this application set the standard for 26th Avenue and the entire Grandview Heights area. We know through streets like 164, 24th Avenue, and 168 will all have higher-density housing, but the residential avenues in Grandview Heights, such as 26th, should be protected from rampant high-density developments. The city owes it to the longtime residents of Surrey who love this area but are increasingly concerned about how development is being handled. Thank you for allowing my submission. With best regards, Tracy Reddy.
Thanks for your comments. Did you want to leave that letter, Sybil, with the planner, with the city clerk? Motion to receive? Thank you. Falls in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Mike Prosko.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Prosko, and I reside at 2696172 Street in South Surrey. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I am here tonight to speak in support of File 7912032300 as represented by CityWest Consulting and Roger Chawanda. I and other concerned taxpayers have been fully engaged in the planning process for this file from the beginning. I'll not take up your time needlessly with the details of the process, however, I would like and I would suggest it has been a needlessly long and difficult journey, as you've heard from several of the speakers thus far. For the benefit of attendees tonight, and these are essentially people behind me listening, I would offer the following context. This is an area of large, single-detached homes on acreage-sized lots. For these reasons, it was imperative that the transitional density that we've referred to this evening and the built form reflect and complement the scale and quality of the existing lots and homes in the area. The initial offering by the agent CityWest fell short of these expectations and as a result, were unanimously rejected by homeowners on 26th Avenue and farther afield. Also, homeowners living to the east along 26th Avenue, including homeowners in Grandview Estates, Country Acres, and Country Woods, which I live in, all expressed their opposition to duplex-style construction and the use of narrow-lot design, which was very early on in the discussion. I would add to the discussion that few, if any, established homeowners expressed opposition to emergent development now sweeping Grandview Heights. However, they all demanded that their neighborhoods be respected and preserved throughout the process. After much back and forth, a reasonable compromise was reached regarding lot size, layout, and built form. And it is worth noting that the City of Surrey's professional staff are the taxpayers' representatives to this process, despite an overwhelming degree of influence and time afforded to developers of all stripes. This unbalanced relationship is and remains a major concern going forward. I respectfully make the suggestion that this is an opportunity for you, Madam Mayor, and your councilors to address and thus eliminate much of the criticism you face pertaining to the planning and development ongoing throughout the city. Madam Mayor is aware that South Surrey is a special community within our great city. Those of us fortunate to live in this part of the city know that we enjoy a lifestyle and a standard of living that is the envy of many. Thusly, it comes as no surprise to you or the councilors that taxpayers will become involved in matters affecting their homes, families, and quality of life. And this is a good thing, Madam Mayor. Your predecessor often lamented that the need to foster public engagement and in so doing strengthen the public process we all subscribe to. I would also point out that the Grandview Heights Stewardship Association, of which I am a director, was created in response to the needs of taxpayers and homeowners across Grandview Heights, many of whom want to know how their part of Surrey is being planned for and managed by city staff. The GHSA is an information portal for concerned citizens. Members and the public access the site to gain knowledge of city processes concerning planning and development. The GHSA is only an information portal. As a result, members are free to choose and act in accordance with their interests. At this time, I would like to acknowledge and publicly thank a number of your city staff, starting first with Mr. Jean Lamonteng, Mr. Nicholas Ly, Mr. Ron Hinch, Mr. Doug McCloud, and Ms. Heather Kamitaka-Hera, all who gave generously of their time, patience, perseverance, and most of all, their expertise in keeping to the process. I thank them for their professionalism regarding this file. In closing, Madam Mayor, much goodwill has been established, and I look forward to the continuing this collaboration with the City of Surrey staff and concerned citizens. Looking forward, there are many more files pending and pending along 26th Avenue, as you've heard this evening. I'm confident that you share the belief that we do the best we can and get it right the first time. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Thank you for your comments on this land use application.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilors, city staff, and neighbors, my name is Gary Cameron. I live at 2763 165 Street. Those involved in the negotiations that led to the final version of this development proposal before you tonight are to be congratulated for their hard work, their willingness to compromise, and their tenacity, and it's important to acknowledge that city planning staff played a pivotal role in making this happen. I know many homeowners in our area are particularly concerned about what will happen as further development proposals emerge for the properties on 26th Avenue east of this one, all the way from 164 Street to 168 Street in the Orchard Grove NCP area. I've been told repeatedly that developers have the right to submit any proposal for consideration, no matter how unrealistic, and that everything must be considered. I understand the reasoning behind this, but I think there's something council could consider doing that might ease the workload of our planners considerably while reassuring local residents that their opinions are relevant. The Official Community Plan encourages urban land development in appropriate locations within existing residential neighborhoods when developed compatibly with existing neighborhood character. The Grandview Heights General Land Use Plan specifies that transition densities adjacent to existing one-acre subdivisions be defined through compatible frontage widths for lots facing each other along the street and building designs that are compatible in height and massing for buildings facing each other along the street. The Orchard Grove Neighborhood Concept Plan was developed to be compatible with the existing and planned surrounding land uses and points out that the lands north of 26th Avenue are estate residential in character, consisting of larger homes on large lots. It calls for a sensitive interface and density transition along 26th Avenue with the suburban designated lands to the north, and allows flexibility in home design provided that the form and character already established on 26th Avenue is maintained. I would ask that council provide our planners with guidance that the lot frontages approximately 31 meters in width on the five properties on 26th Avenue we are discussing today serve as the standard for the minimum lot widths allowed for future development proposals along the south side of 26th Avenue. This would enable discussions between developers, planners, and existing neighbors to concentrate on other important aspects like landscape buffers and building design standards that would maintain property values and retain the unique character of the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to Bylaw Number 5? Anyone after this gentleman? You okay, sir? You're not speaking?
I'll let him go first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Roger Chawanda from CityWest Consulting. We're located on King George Highway, Suite 101 9030, King George Boulevard. I'd like to speak to the first delegation, just to clarify some of the things there. She had raised a few issues about traffic on 164 Street. I guess 164 Street will be widened to a major collector standard and therefore, which will allow some parking, bike lanes, and the other thing was the lane access. If you can put the layout on there, Nicholas, I would appreciate that. The issue she raised with the lane access to 164 Street, the application that we brought forward in July, it showed the lane exiting onto 164 Street at that time as well. One of the things that we've done was to talk to the 14 neighbors along 164 Street, and our original application also proposed RF-9 lots along 164 Street. So after speaking with them all, we've changed the density to, or the zoning to RF-12 to more or less mirror image what's on the west side. Now, in the RF-12, the reason we're at 12 meters is because we have the lane access so for rear driveways. We believe the lane exiting to 164 Street is, it provides a direct access to 164 Street rather than having it lead into the internal, local road of 164A Street and then out to 26th Avenue. So this is a better location. Ultimately, there'll be three additional exit points on this stretch of lane and two to the south. There's an application underway. However, there is a property in between this site and the application to the south, which will extend that lane south, and it should improve the, yes. That's all the comments that I've got. Parking was another issue that she had brought up. The RF-10 lots on the internal development, they will provide garages, which are set back at about six meters. So the RF-10s will provide five parking on the lot, and the RF-12 lots should accommodate four parking at the rear. And there'll be ample parking in the front on 164 and 164A Street along with 25A Avenue. So if there's any questions you may have.
Any questions? I see none. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Please step forward. Sybil, you're up. Sybil, you already spoke. Okay. I'm going to assume, Sybil, that you're speaking...
I'm now, Madam Mayor and council, requesting to speak on behalf of myself.
Okay.
And the trees.
Yes.
Okay. I am very pleased at what has been accomplished, and I'm very pleased that the city has heard. I've worked with my companions here, with my neighbours, and my dearest hope is that I'm not going to have to go right back like a game of Snakes and Ladders, because I always get that big fellow that goes back to start when we get over to my side of the street, on the other side of 168. Namely, I'm very, very much hoping that the precedent of transitional zoning across the road from us, I live at 17267, 26th Avenue in Country Woods, that this movement will continue right out to the Pacific Highway, that we won't have to go through this agonizing fight with each little bit, the piecemeal bit. My dream is that we, by doing this, get the vision, continue with the vision that has been started here, keep the flow of trees, the preservation of our majestic conifers right across 26th Avenue and down 168. I'm still waiting for an answer, by the way, on the trees, the street trees on 168. It's now over a year that we're on my petition. But these are the corridors that are going to help so much to maintain the beauty and the character that makes South Surrey and Grand View Heights the beautiful place that it is. When these corridors fall, Grand View Heights will be no more, and I don't want that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I think I saw someone else wishing to speak to this bylaw.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council and staff. Ron and Joan Melnick, 2541 164 Street. One of my concerns is the speed of traffic along 164, as it is right now, and with the additional densification, I'm afraid it's going to even be, even be more of a problem. And so, one of my concerns is adding two more stop signs at 26th and 164th.
And I have some letters here from four residents that couldn't come tonight, and they're all concerned about that laneway coming out on 164, and they are proposing to have it flipped to coming out through Lot 11 and coming out through 26. So I've got all these letters.
Move receipt. Move to receive the letters. Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried. Thank you, and thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw number five? Oh, I had him down as a no speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry, I didn't write any letter. I just come back from my vacation, and I'm living in 2589 164 Street. I'm just next door of Tom and the barb. I fully support their comments about this bylaw. And I think the key problem for this new development is still the density. I really appreciate the change of the lot across the street of my house. They changed from RF9 to RF12.
12, yes.
Yeah, I think that is a good change. I appreciate that. But you can see the density inside of that development plan is still much higher than the density in our site, on the east side of 164 Street. This area becomes really crowded. When I moved to this area, there's no traffic at all on 164 Street, even on the 24th Avenue, there's no traffic at all. But right now, there's really, in the morning, when I drive my kids to the school, I have to wait on the intersection of 24th and 164 Street for a very long time, waiting for the traffic. The density already quite high at this moment. After this, the full development of this plan, if it's become true, I can't imagine how busy the 164 Street will be. And I really think they should change the traffic line, lead to 164 Street, to the other venue. And I also hope they can reduce the density of this development, even inside of this development plan. We call Surrey as the city of park, but actually, there's no park in our neighbourhood. From 164 Street to, from 160 Street to 168 Street, there's no park at all. It's just some sidewalk where we can walk our dog in the neighbourhood. And I see all these new development plans in the area. They always resume, they always have their proposal to resume their development plan. It never becomes decreased density. I always see the trend is like people just want to increase the density. It's like they just want to make more money from the development plan. It's not right. I think we, in the end, even the developer, they want the area to be, to be a place to attract more people to move in. If they really want that, if they really want to achieve this goal, they should make this area more livable. That's why I really support some of the people they mentioned. The character of the area is more like a countryside. It's a rural area. It's not a city. We will never become like Vancouver or the central city like this density. I truly hope we can reduce the density, even for this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dear Madam Mayor and council and staff, my name is Mark Blinkhorn. I live at 16505 26th Avenue. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And at the start, I would like to say I'm in favour of the current proposal as it stands. I identify that this proposal is one of compromise, and so there are things, of course, that I would rather were different, such as the frontages being larger across, on the, on the south side of 26. I'm just hearing about our neighbours on 164th. I don't mean any disrespect, but I remember when they were acreages and two acreages housed along there, and I remember what the traffic was like then, and I know what it is like now. So I can tell you, now it's much more than then, and that is because of the development in the neighbouring area. So I appreciate the frustrations, because I found it frustrating when along 164th, they were not matching frontages to what was on the, on the east side. That being said, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, councillors, regarding our neighbourhood concerns on the transitioning from the north side of 26th Avenue to the south side over the last several months. I appreciate the time you've given us. I appreciate willingness to listen to our concerns. And once again, I would like to thank Madam Mayor, who prior to being elected into your current role as a councillor, came out and spoke with me. We actually, I think, met a little bit by chance, but you'd come down the street to see exactly what was happening.
Thought you were at the garden, or...
Well, I was, I was a bit, I was a bit muddy and dirty then, so, but yes, I was working on my rock wall in the back. With regard to the staff, I would like to thank Mr. Nicholas Ly, and Mr. Ron Hinchey, and Heather Camitaka-Hera for all their work and their patience with us. I'd like to thank Doug MacLeod with Engineering coming out and talking to us about the roads. I'd even like to thank Roger Chawanda. The last time I came to the city, Roger and I both went up on the elevator together with no one else, and we both came out unscathed. So, but we're willing to work together.
We'll consider that success.
I would consider that a success. In meeting with us regarding the proposals and ensuring concerns were listened to and taken, I thank the staff for that. Actually, I first started coming to planning to discuss our concerns around the time as the NCP was coming in. We had one neighbour that was involved in it, and he actually moved away because he was unhappy with the results of the NCP. But so, we've been coming to council, not to council, but to planning and talking about since at least 2002, if not, 2012, if not 2011. And again, the plan we have here tonight is one of compromise. Many hours of work have gone into the ultimate plan coming to the public hearing tonight by paid people, the city staff, the developers, agents, but also unpaid by the, by the residents of the area. The neighbours on 26th Avenue, 166A Street, and 27th Avenue view this plan as setting the standard for transitioning from the north side to the south side of 26th Avenue, all the way down the street. And I think you've heard that several times. We hear from planning that they have to look at each applicant, application as its own, but I would hope that council, being aware of how much work has gone into just this, you know, 400-metre stretch, well, not 400 metres, 200-metre stretch, has taken quite a bit of time, and that we could probably save the staff and the city all sorts of resources by sort of saying this is the standard we're going to meet. Again, I'm not opposed to the development. As we said, you know, we're talking about the traffic along 164th. Yes, it's much busier now than when I moved in there. I used to be able to walk up and down 164th on a route, and I didn't have to worry about anything. But now, in order to do that, even though we have the sidewalk, if you walk on the other side, you have to be careful you're not going to get hit by a car. If we could put the map up that shows, I'd just like to talk about the laneway or the alley.
Mr. Planner?
So, I can appreciate the people on 164th's concern about the alley coming out there, but as pointed out, it does have two other entrances that'll be coming in further south. To punch it through in the opposite direction onto 164A, in fact, it's going to flow all of that traffic onto 26th Street. And as it's coming around that corner there, it's still going to come out onto 164th Street. Unfortunately, I think most of the people from this area are actually going to be heading to the shopping centre over on 160th and so, so it's still going to be coming along there. The comments, my understanding, again, the NCP, if we're talking about driveways, has specified that there's no driveways coming into the front of these properties, that it's all to be alley, and that does give quite a bit of protection along 164th and decreases the congestion on 164th because of that. But that lack of driveways, or not having driveways, is specified in the NCP down 26th Avenue, and that was put in there to respect the, you know, what we on 26th are going to be giving up by the higher density south of us. Also specified in the NCP is the multi-use pathway, which is not going to be interrupted by, by, by driveways. With regard to the traffic congestion, I've heard several times from the engineering department in our meetings that they are aware of the problems of the intersection at 26th and 164th. I'm sure as many as you know, 164th, just after it heads north from 26th, creates quite a bit down, down the hill, and it is a bit of a blind intersection, particularly when cars are parked there. And I'm confident that increasing the width and adding a traffic light that they suggest will, will help with that. So overall, I think it's been a long haul, and I would hope that council will approve this proposal onto third reading later on. Thank you very much for the opportunity. If I may, with your permission, I do have a neighbour that was unable to attend tonight due to illness, and he has a letter that he would like me to read, if I'm able to.
If you would like, or if you would like us to just acknowledge this as a support letter, that is fine as well.
My neighbour friend here is Murray McFadden. His address is 16979 28th Avenue. City of Surrey Council meeting, Dear Mayor Hepner and Council, subject transitions, rural to urban, and septic field to sanitary sewer. I write to support the NCP transitional compromise along 26th Avenue in regard to the February 23rd Amendment to File Number 7912032300. The solution is less elegant than the transect continuum planning methods of new urbanism and smart growth movements as detailed in, which there is a website link, but is enhanced by the adjusted transitional landscape buffer and three-metre enhanced sidewalk. I am a nearby resident of Grand View Heights and greatly concerned about future transitional transect design for the large swaths of GH areas 2345 and north Grand View Heights, which are currently served by septic fields and sometime soon to be received sanitary sewer with progressive urbanisation.
Mr. Blinkhorn, if this is relative to this particular application, then that is fine, but if we're going to go on relative to other planning avenues, then could we just receive that as support for this application and pass it in?
Okay, I'll pass that in.
Just in respective...
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Move receipt. Second, all those in favour, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Blinkhorn. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw number five? First call, second call, third and final call on this bylaw. Thank you, and Madam Clerk, on to bylaw number six. Here's our final bylaw in its zoning text amendment, bylaw 18414. The applicant is the City of Surrey. This text amendment will incorporate housekeeping and text amendments identified through the ongoing administration of the bylaw, and will clarify zoning regulations and ensure consistency with the city policies as described in Corporate Report 2015-R022. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Public Hearing, bylaw number six? First call, second call, third and final call, and that closes this evening's public hearing portion of the agenda. Moving into committee reports, Agriculture and Food Security Advisory.
Move that the Agriculture and Food Security Advisory Committee minutes from January 15, 2015, to be received.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried. Move Seniors Advisory and Accessibility Committee, February 3, 2015, movement to be received. Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried. Councillor LeFrank, did I...
It automatically turned on.
Oh, automatic. Waiting for you to go. Magical. Culture Development Advisory Committee?
Move the minutes be received.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
I mean, I made this one comment on the minute, so I just wanted to bring to your attention that we've had a preliminary report on the new development of the Clayton Heights Recreation Centre that has a very interesting and exciting new arts component that's actually designed to not only provide opportunity for arts, but also to help build community in that area. So I think it's going to be an exciting new component of that facility.
Thank you, and a much-needed facility.
And the next one is to propose the recommendations to be adopted.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried. Parks?
Yeah, move the minutes be received of the February 25th, Parks, Recreation, and Sport Tourism Committee.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
And move the recommendations be adopted.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, Parcel Tax Review, March 16.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes from the Surrey Heritage Advisory Committee, 21st, May 15.
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
And recommendation to...
Second, all those in favour, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes be received for the Board of Aire in February 11.
All those in favour, opposed, carried. And proclamations, you're going to have to bear with me, we have a lot of proclamations here this evening. First one is Earth Hour 2015, March 28. Whereas Earth Hour has grown from a one-city initiative in 2007 to a global movement, united people to take action to create a sustainable world, and whereas Earth Hour brings together communities from across the world, celebrating that commitment to the planet by symbolically switching off lights for one designated hour from 8:30 PM to 9:30 PM on Saturday... 9:30 p.m. on Saturday, March 28, 2015. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare March 28, 2015 as Earth Hour 2015 in the City of Surrey. Candlelight, everyone. Next is, and this is the first time, I think, this has been acknowledged as a proclamation, World Autism Awareness Day, April 2, 2015. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a lifelong neurological disability that significantly affects communication, social skills, and behavior, and whereas this month, 80 children will be diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder in B.C., one out of every 68 newborns, and whereas there is no known cause or cure for autism, and whereas our health care, education, and community support services should work with individuals with ASD, and we encourage all of our citizens to learn more about autism, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare April the 2nd as World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Surrey. And to that end, we've received some T-shirts that have been given to us by a young man who designed this and who is autistic, so we'll wear that on April the 2nd in recognition of World Autism Awareness Day. Next is the proclamation on Daffodil Month. Whereas the Canadian Cancer Society's British Columbia and UConn Division continues to be a leader in funding outstanding cancer research, undertaking cancer prevention initiatives and delivering support services to people with cancer and their families, and whereas the Canadian Cancer Society's British Columbia and UConn Division consistently demonstrate a collaborative approach to cancer control and represents the interest of all citizens of the City of Surrey affected by cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the month of April 2015 as Daffodil Month in the City of Surrey. Male Survivors of Sexual Abuse Awareness Month, April 2015. Whereas the problem of child sexual abuse persists in an atmosphere of silence and ignorance, and whereas the problem of boyhood sexual exploitation is often overlooked, neglected, and poorly understood, and whereas the efforts to protect male children from sexual victimization and rehabilitative services are lagging, and boys who are sexually abused usually lack appropriate adult male role models and mentors to assist them in their recovery, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare April 2015 as Male Survivors of Sexual Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Surrey. And a final proclamation is the National Poetry Month, also April 2015. Whereas we recognize the cultural importance of language and literacy as the primary means of conveying knowledge, and whereas literature is defined as words raised to an art form, and whereas poetry is amongst the oldest forms of literature that aims to express humankind's emotions, and whereas literacy is nurtured by the sharing and promotion of all forms of literature, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare April 2015 as National Poetry Month in the City of Surrey. And that's it, I've done it out of those. Let me, if you'll bear with me, under the mayor's report, I'd also like to acknowledge the various committees and the applications that were received and those who are appointed as committee members. Agriculture Food Security Advisory Committee, Pat Harrison, Martin Himmler, Bill Sandu, Harmpreet Dillon, Gayhan, and Dr. Barbara Reed. Those folk have already been advised of their placement, but I must acknowledge it publicly. Diversity Advisory Committee, Serene Al-Nasir, Tariq Guman, Dr. Balbir Girm, Bill King, John Kovak, Mohammed Malik, Tom Olman, Christina Poblinsky, Mary Ann Pine, Sarbjeet Sabarwal, Colta Ortera, Suma Altohas, Dr. Pauline Greaves-Alward, Manny Fallon, Anna David, and Vic Find. The Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, Bob Campbell, Go Paul Sahoda, Deborah Sky, Rosaline Baines, Norma Roman Hogan, Jeff Young. Parks, Recreation and Sport Tourism Committee, Cliff Hannibal, Rick Benson, Bonnie Burnside, Rich Gorman, Gerpreet Rai, and Melanie Booth. The Public Art Advisory Committee, Debbie Langtry, Robert McMurray, Shannon Quantz as the alternate. Social Policy Advisory Committee, Lynn Reed, Michelle Shaw, Del Tour, Connie Hong, Karen Desa, and a youth representative, Moni Tut. I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly. Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission, Rick Hart, Bert Hall, Amanda Smith Weston. Board of Variants, Punit Sander. Surrey Library Board Youth Representative, Aya Abdel-Daimon. Acknowledge those. And one more item that as relative to my trip to Israel, just been rolling out lots over the coming months, but I just wanted to say publicly that I met with the mayor of Beersheva, a city of similar size to Surrey, that is home to Ben Gurion University and has a very large complex called Cyber Spark, which fosters international alliances between some of the biggest and most important information technology businesses in the world. And to that end, we signed a Partners in Innovation Agreement between Surrey and the City of Beersheva to share the best practices in innovation and to explore academic and research partnerships in the areas of health, technology, innovation, and to advance those technologies and commercializations, also with Simon Fraser University and the Ben Gurion University. I also attended the Israel Brain Technologies Conference along with our Dr. Ryan Darcy from the Simon Fraser University, and had the opportunity to address the delegates and build on our and strengthen Surrey's Innovation Boulevard. There are some significant opportunities and partnerships that we will be hearing about over the next, the coming months, and there will be reciprocal visits back to Canada within the next few months, so there's more on that later. And moving on now to corporate reports. The first report, Award of Contract West Kennedy Feeder Manes Construction.
I'll move the recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the contract for the Grandview Pump Station upgrade.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the contract for the distribution of the water mains package.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the sale of city properties.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
9661137A Street, I should have given the address, not. Not all city property.
Surplus, not all city property, surplus property.
That's right. And the modification lease agreement for the RCMP District 3.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the proposed UBCM resolution for routine highway maintenance over pipelines.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And just for the public's edification, that's looking for some clarification over the construction and maintenance that we do that is over top of pipelines.
Okay. Number R044 is closure of road adjacent to 15545 and 15555, 26th Avenue.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And we'll move the Redwood Heights Neighborhood Concept Plan, the Stage 2 Funding Component.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And this is advancing the Stage 2 Plan in Redwood Heights, but putting that within the control of the City of Surrey's Planning Department. Fergus Watershed Biodiversity Park.
I'll move the Fergus Watershed Biodiversity Preserve Park Management Plan.
Second.
And Madam Mayor, just a quick comment, that we had a great presentation this afternoon from our staff member who actually acknowledged the hard work of our community partners, the Surrey Environmental Partners and the Semi-Emoficient Game, amongst just a few that were involved in the planning. And I think it's a great new plan to preserve a natural area in the Fergus Creek area of South Surrey in one of our neighborhoods' concept plans, and really a major component of our biodiversity conservation strategy, so it's nice to see it coming off of paper and into reality.
Thank you for those comments. It's about 68 acres, and will advance ultimately to over 100 acres. And thank you very much, Counselor Hain, for moving that one forward and getting it in front of us. It was a great presentation this afternoon. Moving on, the Award of Contract for Custodial Maintenance Services. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Port R048, the East Fraser Heights Abbey Ridge Land Use Concept.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate Port R049, the proposed amendments to Surrey Official Community Plan Bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And moving on to Business arising for the public hearing, number one. Ms. Barrow, number one. Second. Second. Counselor Hain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just have a question, I just want to oppose with planning, and that's to do with the orphan lot in the very corner of that proposal. And I just want to be sure that we're not going to leave an island there that is either devalued or, it wasn't brought up during the public hearing tonight, but I just wanted to get quickly a better sense from staff as to how we see that orphan lot, because it certainly would make sense that it was part of the application, but obviously the proponent couldn't come to terms with the owner. So I'd just like to hear comments from staff on that.
Madam Mayor, the condo lot at the southeast corner of 64 and 138, there's opportunity for them to redevelop into two lots, similar to the one that is being proposed as part of this application. The, this application is proposing two RF12 lots, so similarly, the condo lot has that same potential.
So that, so Madam Mayor, through you, that's, we're expecting that to come forward in the future, or that could just be held as it is indefinitely, then with the ingress and egress to the townhouse complex beside it?
Are you talking about the lot as within this, the two lots within this application?
No, I'm talking about the orphan lot that is not part of this application.
The plan, yeah, the plan calls for RF12 type of development, but my understanding is the developer has discussion with the owner of that particular lot a number of times, and they're not willing to sell.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Counselor Hain? I'm confused as well, does that, is there, the, could we put the map up and just let us, before we call the question here on third, understand the potential advantage or disadvantage to that triangular piece, that corner piece?
So part of this application creates two RF lots at a corner there, and then this remnant piece here, who is not part of this application, has potential to redevelop into small lots.
Into small lots?
Small.
Really? How, the parcel one and two next to it are, what are they developed into? You're going to have to back that up a bit. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, the plan calls for small lots along the east side of 138th Street. So even though, if you look at the lot south of it, those lot has the potential to subdivide into two, according to the NCP. So we feel that there is opportunity, be it as limited as shown, but there is possibility that they can have maybe two units, duplex. There are different forms of development that can up the density from the present while single family.
Okay.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, Counselor Hain?
It would, but if those were split into two lots, we wouldn't allow those to empty out onto 64th Avenue, would we? To exit onto 64th?
No, they will be, they will be onto 138. There's also possibility to provide an easement to work with the one that faces 64th. There's different ways that we can deal with it so that the traffic will not be channeled directly to 64.
Okay.
Is that property deep enough to empty onto that road? It doesn't look like it's possible.
They could have potential for safe, at subdivided into two lots. In terms of access, we can make sure that the interior lot will also take an easement with this lot here to check to go to 138th Street. Or they can also go to the lane, which is established as part of this application.
So go to the lane, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does that make more sense to you?
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Planner. Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on two.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on three.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on four.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on four.
Second. Heritage Revitalization Final, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
On five, move third on the zoning.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third reading on the second zoning.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. May I ask one? It's carried, are you going to ask the question on the DVP?
I just want clarification on a statement that was made, that there was going to be a traffic light at 26th and 164th. Is that correct information, or was that a misunderstanding?
Madam Mayor. Mr. Engineer? Yes, Madam Mayor, there is, there are no plans currently for a traffic signal at that intersection. It will be monitored as development progresses to see if we need to put a stop sign, another four-way stop.
So we'll be looking at the count and seeing whether or not that ultimately becomes necessary?
That's correct.
Thank you. Does that satisfy you, Counselor?
It does, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't think I saw that in the report, so I always mention it.
That's correct, there is no call for a traffic signal at this time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So also on five, move issuance of development variance permit, please.
Second. Development variance permit, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on six.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried, permits, number seven.
Move development variance permit on seven.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On eight, move development variance permits.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move development variance permit on nine.
Madam Mayor? Yes. On zoning bylaw 18414, we gave it third, and on that one, we can, that's the text amendment, we can ask for final on that. We put that on table for you? I can do final on?
Yes.
Six?
Number six.
Okay. On the text amendment, move final.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we are at nine. All those looking for a, on the DVP?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the development variance permit on number 10.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the development variance permit on number 11.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And on the zoning, move the development variance permit.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the development variance permit on number 13.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the development variance permit on number 14.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. 15.
Move issuance of the development variance permit for 15.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And 16, move the development, issuance of the temporary use permit on 16.
All those in favor, opposed, carried, final introductions.
Move first on one.
Seventeen.
Sorry, on seventeen.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 19, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 19, move introduction.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Public hearing is set for April 13th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 20.
Filing.
File 20.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And parking patrol appointments.
Um, on financial statements, aren't we, Madam?
Oh, financial statements first?
Yeah. Move, uh, 1A.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Oh, and the next one, Newton.
Move the financial statements on the Newton BIA.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Conferences?
I'll move, um, 2A, um, on the Columbia Institute Forum.
Governance Forum, all those in favor, do I have a second or second?
Sorry.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And now, thank you, I was missing a page.
Parking patroller.
Parking patroller appointments.
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, okay, all those in favor, Subwinder Magara and Hardy Gill being appointed parking patrollers, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion? Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and thank you for your, uh, wonderful work this evening.